Do you know where your children?
Yeah, what does it deal with that?
That's the NFL there, dude.
Be glad it is.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call a mean to order. It is Tuesday, January ninth, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Jeff.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think in full disclosure, you need to tell everybody that you're on a tear this morning.
I am, my golly. I apologize in advance if.
A set foot out of harm's way.
There's no harm, no.
Okay, do we have any minutes or reports received and filed?
No, we do not.
What have you been doing?
I did one event.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
So, we've got a Home Builder Association Board Meeting this afternoon, Planning Commission Meeting this evening, weather permitting. Let's see, Town Waste Management District Board Meeting, and then Postponer. We've got HBA General Membership Meeting tomorrow night. I think there's a City Public Works Planning Committee Meeting tomorrow, or Thursday morning. Chamber Coffee Friday morning, and then quarterly reports are due Monday, so don't forget those. Ethics Commission.
Mine are dough.
I think that's it.
This afternoon, there's a Missouri State Tax Commission Meeting I'm gonna log into tomorrow, excuse me, salute 24 meeting. There's an MU Health Event tomorrow afternoon at formerly known, AKA CAP Region, I guess. Thursday is the City Public Works, L U Basketball Thursday Night, and next Monday is Martin Luther King Day.
Holliday.
Yep. Okay, yes, tomorrow I will be at the ribbon cutting for the MU Healthcare at 12:30. Then I have a Sons of Union Veterans meeting at 4:30, and a USS Jefferson City Committee Meeting at 5:30. Thursday, I am speaking at a House Hearing on Missouri Medal of Honor Recipients at 8:00 a.m., and then we've got 250th Birthday Committee Meeting at 9:00 a.m., and then I have an MU N R O T C Lunch at 11:30. And Saturday is Sons of American Revolution Meeting. So, yeah, Wednesday and Thursday are gonna be fun. Okay, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, the tri-level planning study presentation and discussion.
So, Paul and I will kinda go through this as brief as we can. I think you all are familiar with what's going on. So, the tri-level interchange has been the topic of conversation lately, some accidents here and there, maybe a little more so lately than what we've seen. Of course, the tri-level's been a problem for many years. Actually, it was on the, there was a conversation on the radio this morning about it, so it's a, it's a topic. It's getting some attention from the local, state, and national leaders. So, Paul, with J.C. Rep, has kinda led the effort to try to come up with something and try to move at least a study going forward, so we can know what the solutions to that problem is, and look for some funding that might be out there. Once we know, once we have a plan in place, then you can start looking for funding, either at the state or the national level. So, Paul, kinda spearheaded some meetings, and through that process, worked through Campo, and we've identified that there's some Campo funding that would be available to put towards a planning study. And with that, there'd also be, need to be some local, city and county contributions to complete that. So, Paul, you wanna go through kinda the process, as far as the schedule that's in your packet, and then the planning, the study area that we're gonna be looking at?
Yeah, so we, you know, through these discussions, you know, met with Eric, city staff, Campo, MoDOT District Staff as well, and, you know, we, and as well as the Chamber Transportation Committee, Bob Gilbert over there, and Gary Plummer have been involved as well. And so we think the study is probably gonna cost, probably low end is $300,000, high end would be $500,000. The Campo money that is available is in the amount of $200,000, so that leaves us, which it does require a 20% or $50,000 match for that. So, basically, the minimum we would have to spend is $250,000, so the extra 50 would be split evenly between the city and the county. So, kinda the minimum in is $25,000. The absolute maximum would be 150 from the county, but in reality, we think it's probably between 25 and 75,000 for the study. Campo and city staff would be initiating the request for qualifications for a consultant. That would probably start in March. There's some Campo, I'll call it bureaucracy, that we have to go through in order to get that on their plan. But they would initiate the consultant selection in March. The consultant would be selected in April. Through the month of May, we would work with the consultant to develop a scope and fee for the study, and then in June, the consultant contract would be awarded, and the study would start. Basically, the study area would be the, from the Missouri River Bridge, going south on 54 to just past the Missouri Boulevard Interchange, and then on Highway 50, we would go east to the Jackson Street Overpass, where the, basically, the end of where the Lafayette Street Interchange was, construction was done, and then we'd go west about to Dix Road. So, it's a pretty broad area. The expressway part of it was included in a previous study, so that, that work would just be kinda updating the work that was done already, looking at the assumptions that were made at the time, and potentially making some modifications to that, but basically be an update of the study. With the completion of this planning study, you know, what we would look for is to have a identification of problem areas within that study area, potential solutions to those problems, and then some cost estimates on, on what it'd actually cost to construct. With that information in hand, then that would allow us to look to apply to federal grants, start talking with state and federal legislators on earmarks for that project, and be able to move that into the, you know, complete the environmental work, design work, and ultimately, construction. So, with the record amount of infrastructure spending that's going on right now, you know, this is really the ideal time to do that. We've also got some congressmen in Washington in the Missouri delegation that are in some key spots, so we really think this is a good time to be looking to do this, and look for your support to move the study forward.
About a month and a half ago, two months ago, Paul and I met with MoDOT to see what their interest level was in leading this study, and they, they're not interested at this time, unfortunately. The money's not identified to do a project, so they didn't want to lead this effort, so that's why it's being done locally. And, but however, they will be, allow staff to work with us to make sure that the study that's completed would be able to go to the next level of an environmental study, if and when some funding is identified, and at that time, MoDOT would lead that effort going forward. So, it's just kind of, it's very similar to the problem definition study that was done on the expressway back in 2006 that the county paid for. In that case, MoDOT actually led that project, but we funded the study. Just some timelines, real quick. So, Campo will approve this at a special meeting on January 24th, and at that time, they'll, they'll need to have commitment from the county for the match for the 200, our $200,000 Campo Fund, so 25 each from the city and county, so that would be, and I don't know if we need to do a resolution type of thing, or just have it in the minutes that the county supports that. We don't have to do it today. I was planning on doing it at the meeting next week, and we can draft something if Campo needs that for their supplemental, so it's whatever you all think would be best in that case. Is there any questions about this whole process?
No, I'm prepared to move ahead, so, you know, get the, I think, both of you are kind of of the same opinion, so.
So, we're trying to move this along rather quickly. We've had several meetings for the last couple months to talk about this, and there were probably some of the same questions that y'all probably had before, you know, is the state gonna accept this if we go through all this, and then are they gonna help at all? You know, they're, I guess they're more concentrated on across the river at this time, I-70, stuff like that, so this wasn't at top of their list, but I don't think there's anything on their, on the STIP, this, the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So, if we get this scope of work done, maybe we can get it on the STIP, and there's three tiers on there that you gotta start somewhere, and, you know, we may not even, maybe 20 years before you even see anything happen, but we gotta start somewhere, nothing's.
Well, and that's exactly right, and the way, you know, MoDOT, you know, Central District plans, you know, throughout the entire district, and then that gets put in with the rest of the MoDOT districts on, you know, what gets funded and what gets put on the STIP on a statewide basis, and, you know, there's always more needs than there are dollars available. And with a project of this size, you know, it's, it's easy to get kicked down the road because it is, you know, such a large dollar amount, you know, with the dollars we're talking about, you know, you can knock off, you know, five or 10 other projects with the, with the dollars you're talking about for one project here. And so, MoDOT's focus, as far as their, their work product, is based on the things that are funded and are on the STIP. So what we're trying to do is find the funding part of it, and if we can bring the dollars to the table, then that would allow MoDOT to put it on the STIP. They would be able to dedicate resources to it once it's, once it's on that list, so, you know, this is a, kind of a model that a lot of other communities around the state are doing, and that's how some of their projects are getting funded, by, you know, showing that there is a true local desire to do these things. So that's what we're trying to do, is move this thing forward, figure out what the real dollars are we're talking about, and then be able to go find that money and hopefully bring the funding to MoDOT and get it on the STIP eventually, so.
Now, we can't really go after any grants without having this step of the process done.
Right. It's talked, it's been talked about for years, but there's never really been any work done on it to really know what the, what the issues truly are and what the solutions could be, so.
So, working through Campo, we have the, is it the Unified Work Planning, U P W P, Unified Planning Work Plan?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, that, I was trying to remember exactly what it stood for, but we have to go in and amend that to get this money in there, and this was gonna bodily take a nine month or one year process, but we've worked with city staff, city council and stuff to get this process done, like Eric said, and try to cut through the bureaucracy bull and get it moving, so.
Yep, and then Public Works and Planning at the, from the city council level will be talking about this at their meeting on this Thursday, so.
It goes to city council for a resolution at the following meeting. So, timing wise, if we, if we do something next week to approve the match money, at a later date, when we're ready to sign a consultant contract, then we would do just a cooperative project agreement with the city.
Okay.
I'm in favor of going forward, as outlined by you two gentlemen. It's a bit of a long shot, but it's gonna be a long time anyway. It'll, it'll be forever if we, we don't try to move the ball down the road a little bit, so. It could be that it's wasted dollars, there's a risk, there's a reward, the reward is worth the risk at this point of the investment.
I believe utilizing the funding from Campo is a big help right here.
Yes, and it shows, it shows somebody, the local enthusiasm to the point of willing to put some of their own money in the, in the mix. Maybe they could, I think we have two misnamed areas there. We have a, something called an expressway. It meets the bare definitions of an expressway, and the other one is a, we have a tri-level that should be renamed the malfunction junction.
I stole that from you, just so you know.
Okay.
I mentioned it the other day at another meeting.
So, anyway, I'm, I'm in favor of this, of the county being a player, matching the city's numbers, and then leveraging it against, with the Campo money.
So, I don't know if we need some kinda action today on that, too.
If you wanna vote to support the match, and then I can see if we need an official document, and I can bring that to you next week.
I'll make a motion that we support the match for the tri-level planning study.
Tri-level?
Tri-level.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, any commission comments? Bids and contracts? Approval and signing of C and C Group Soul Source?
C and C Group provides service and maintenance on the Sheriff's Department HVAC controls. The Soul Source is run as, as needed basis and will run for the year 2024. The ad has already ran in the paper, so today I'm just needing approval and signing of the Soul Source.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the C and C Group Soul Source.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Henry Atkins Soul Source?
Henry M. Atkins provides programming and printing of the election ballots for the clerk's office. The system must be compatible with their existing equipment. The budget amount on the Soul Source is 75,000, and will run for the year 2024. This ad has already ran in the paper, and I'm just needing approval and signing.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Henry Atkins Soul Source.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of Accurate Controls Soul Source?
Accurate Controls provide security supplies for the Sheriff's Department. All the supplies must be compatible with their current system. This is on an as-needed basis and will run for the year 2024. It's already ran in the paper, and I'm just needing approval today.
Make a motion to approve and sign the Accurate Controls Soul Source?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of Teleflex Soul Source?
Teleflex provides needles and technology components to the EMS department. That is only compatible option for their current equipment. The Soul Source is on an as-needed basis and will run for the year 2024. It's already ran in the paper, and I'm just needing approval and signing today.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign Teleflex Soul Source.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of whether or not contract, that's Mr. Eric.
So, we have a two-year contract with whether or not for forecasting services, and it's due to renew this year. The amount is $19,752. The City of Jefferson shares 9,276 of that. They share the premier plus service, and then additionally, we have the mid-range forecast, so the total is 19,752, and we will get reimbursed by the city for $9,276.
Quick question, Eric. Our, our use of it, is it, it's a flat number, it doesn't matter how many users we have reading the?
On, on the text list, we're over what our allowed number is. We're a longtime customer, so they give us extra users. We are limited, but generally, if we have a few to add, that it's not a problem.
Okay.
So, we have roughly, I'm gonna say 20, 25 or so, and then the city also has some too, so there's, there's quite a few users of the system. And it's not just the Public Works Department, it's others as well in the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the whether or not contract in the amount of 19,752, shared with the city. Our fee is 9276.
Pardon?
9,276 is our.
That's theirs, the city's.
That's the city's.
Is it supposed to be 50/50?
No.
No, it's not quite.
Not quite, okay.
Not quite, there's an additional, the mid-range forecast only comes to us, and that's 12. That's why it's 92.
Gotcha.
The grand total is 19,752, which includes the city's cost.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval and signing of change order number one, the Westport subdivision improvements.
So, this change order is with Flowmaster Construction, and is the final closeout documents for Northport Draft Stormwater Improvements and the Westport Subdivision Payment Replacement. Primary reason for additional cost was an increase in the amount of curb and gutter by two minutes base, subgrade stabilization, and 18-inch HDPP stormwater pipe, and less work was concrete drive approach needed for completing the project. Overall, this change order is an increase in construction by $33,433.90.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the change order one, Westport Subdivision Improvements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval and signing of change order number one, Cleffner Ridge Pavement Replacement.
So, this change order would be with Drinker Construction Get It LLC, and it is the final closeout documents for the Cleffner Ridge Payment Replacement Project. And the primary reason for additional cost was an increase in the amount of pavement removal, concrete pavement in type V aggregate base needed to complete the project, and there was one change to the project. We added several lengths of curb and gutter to be replaced next to additional concrete pavement. Overall, this change order is an increase in construction by $31,768.55.
So, we had one spot that wasn't on the original scope of the project that got taken care of.
We had a couple places that we added after the fact.
Yes, no, we, they were brought to our attention after the fact.
Yep.
Somebody else had to address it, so really appreciate it.
We've addressed it, and from what I've been told, he seems to be pleased with the fix, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
I liked it better when you were coming before us, and we were actually coming in under.
We're working on it.
Make a motion to approve and sign change order number one for Cleffner Ridge Pavement Replacement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Signing of amendment to our EAP agreement with now the University of Missouri.
And for the folks at home, EAP is the Employee Assistance Program. I'll make a motion to sign the amendment to the EAP agreement with the university, with the now University of Missouri.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Renewal two of parking garage door maintenance services.
This is a renewal with Overhead Door Company for their maintenance services at the Sheriff's Department's garage doors. They've agreed to keep their pricing the same for the year 2024, so our recommendation is to renew with them for another year.
I like not hearing about these garage doors instead of renewal, so.
You can spit and turn in a circle, or, I don't know, whatever break that curse.
All right, I'll make a motion to sign renewal for the parking garage door maintenance services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, extension amendment for Sheriff's Department Uniform Contract.
This is an amendment to extend the current contract for the Sheriff's Department's uniforms with Leon Uniform Company for the year 2024. There's been various increases for different items, but the Sheriff's Department is okay with their increases and has been pleased with their services for the past three years, so our recommendation is to do the extension for the year 2024.
Got them all on my side today, so. Make a motion to sign the extension amendment for the Sheriff's Department Uniform Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bid award of 2023-27 Electrical Services.
We bid out electrical services as needed for our county buildings, and we had the bid opening on December 28th. We received one response from Meyer Electric. We've used Meyer Electric in the past on projects, and Greg's been pleased with their services. Our recommendation is to award 2023-27 to Meyer Electric Company. And I do have a contract to sign as well.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for the 2023-27 Electrical Services to Meyer Electric.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bid award of 2023-28 Medical Grade Oxygen.
We bid out medical grade oxygen for the EMS department and had the bid opening on December 28th. We received one response from Air Gas. Chief Hoy has been pleased with their services in the past and is okay with their pricing. Our recommendation is to award 2023-28 to Air Gas. And I do not have a contract today to sign.
I'll make a motion to award the 2023 Medical Grade Oxygen bid to?
Air Gas.
Air Gas.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have any unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable.
Motion to approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of surplus titles for the Sheriff's Department.
Four titles here.
How many?
They're all 2018, and they're probably selling them on Purple Wing or Go Deals. Go Deals.
Say that again?
They're gonna be selling them on Go Deals.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the four Sheriff Department surplus titles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Jessica, can you let us know what we get for those, just out of curiosity?
Subdivision Street Acceptance.
So, subdivision streets constructed last year will be accepted on a one-year interim period. After the one-year period is up, they will be accepted into the county highway system, and any streets that successfully completed the one-year interim period by the end of 2023 will be fully accepted into the county highway system. And I sent the list of streets and the attached, or the associated plaques to y'all already, so.
Is this a pass fail, or is there, you know, as, as the year goes by, hiccups occur and they get to fix them? How does that work?
So, after the one-year period, we will do another inspection, and any issues that we notice on that inspection, it's up to the developer to correct, and then we will do another inspection to make sure they have followed through with that before we will actually fully accept. The one-year period allows us to plow the snow during the winter.
I'll make a motion to sign the court order for the Douglas Court, Section One, Douglas Court, Section Two, Summerfield Drive, at Summerfield Court, Summerfield Drive, Summerfield Estates, Falcon Crest, Nolan Lane, Nolan Lane, and Signature Ridge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of scrap tire playground servicing vendor quote for Brooks. Approval of scrap tire playground servicing vendor quote for Brooks Park.
So last year, we applied for the grant through the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the recycled scrap tire playground servicing. We were awarded that for $40,000. And so we're in the process of getting the materials approved, and everything in place to do does work in the spring. And this will replace the loose mulch in both playground areas at Brooks Park. And the grant funds will cover most of this. There's another $193 that will have to come out of the park's budget, as well as additional prep work that's needed to prepare the surface for the contractor or the vendor to come in and place the scrap tire surface. So I have the quote here, it's with All-Inclusive Rec. They are an approved contractor through DNR, and they do meet the requirement that there be 40% of Missouri recycled tires in their product that they provide. So the amount is $40,193, and we just need approval of this quote to move forward.
Make a motion to approve the scrap tire playground servicing vendor quote for Brooks Park, $40,193 with All-Inclusive Rec LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So while we're on the parks, have we heard anything about the proposed park that we were?
The park out in Elston or Possible Park.
Yeah, we saw a blank there.
We've had some conversations. Harry, you've talked a little bit with, with.
Dan Renfro.
Dan Renfro at the bank. Really, it's just kinda on hold. We don't have the staffing really to, to take that on right now, so.
It's in limbo as, as far as our side of it is concerned. We didn't have, we didn't have the plans, or the money to really make it usable at this point. I know that the rent was only gonna be a dollar a year, but.
Even if it was free, there's a cost associated.
Even if it was free, it would take, it would take a road in there. He nicely terraced Mr. Ren, I believe the gentleman. He nicely terraced his farm, but every terrace that you go through requires some kind of a, well, a culvert or culvert pipe or something to get a road down there. So at this point, it's probably out of our means.
Well, the reason I was asking is there's, I think there'd be some interest from possibly the 4H shooting sports. And I don't know, I need to sit down and, if somebody's interested, we're gonna try and meet sometime and talk about it because of the costs associated. But I think they have grants available and money available, so that may be something. We would still have to maintain it and stuff, so there, there's associated stuff with it, but it might be an opportunity.
So you say shooting sports, like shotgun or?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think in that, the trust, I don't think any kind of firearms was allowed in there. Is that correct?
I don't recall.
And that, that may, that may shoot the idea down.
Yeah.
Unintended, but it's just something that I wanted to throw out there, that was still, I didn't know where we were at with it, so.
Seems like that came up, not with the 4H, but something else along the line over the past couple of years, as we've been talking about this. And I thought I read where that's prohibited in that trust, so. Let me, let me relook at that, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And if it's, we don't wanna go down a road that's not.
Yeah, if it's an absolute no, then that's, that could make my meeting real quick, so.
If we were to do something there, the first phase would be pavilion, a walking trail around the lake, make it, you know, a fishing lake, and then we'd have to put a road down to it. We didn't really look at any kind of costs associated with that, but we'd be, you know, just rough guess, we'd be probably in the $100,000 range. So, and that just wasn't really within our means right now. It would take an effort to get a bunch of grants and then other items, and then also have to think about the fact that, can we maintain that once it's done or not? And that kinda pushes us over the edge of, can one person handle all, all of that and the parks we got right now and everything else? So that's kinda where we're at, just a little bit in limbo as to whether that's doable or not.
And if we're not gonna do anything with it, I mean, there's somebody that possibly would be interested in doing it and could go a different route, so.
Pickleball courts.
Pickleball shooting courts.
There's nothing to say that it couldn't be privately run or to or a bar area.
Sure.
That, that, yeah, so it, I don't know, I, I'll get you the information just to verify whether shooting is allowed or not. Kind of, we can do it on.
Yeah, if you would.
Yep.
Okay.
Or if they would entertain that idea at all.
Yeah.
Or if we can, who we need to talk to. Maybe Mr. Renfro.
Mr. Renfro, yes.
All right. Anything else?
I don't think so.
I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, a commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: existing or proposed security systems under Section 610.021, subsection 19.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sam.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.